Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to our Tuesday, June 24th, Middlesex County Council Meeting. A welcome to everyone. I will make note here at this time due to the temperature and everything. That jackets are optional, so if you don't want to wear a jacket today, that's fine. We'll call the meeting to order and we'll do a land acknowledgement. Marcy?
We acknowledge that the land we stand upon today is the traditional territory of the Atamanda Run, Anishinaabe, Haudenosaunee, and Lenai Peewas peoples, who have longstanding relationships to the land, water, and region of southwestern Ontario. The local First Nation communities of this area include Chipewa of the Thames First Nation, Oneida Nation of the Thames First Nation, and Manci Delaware Nation. We acknowledge the treaties that are specific to this area. Treaty two McKee Purchase, treaty three Between the Lakes Purchase, treaty six London Township Purchase, treaty twenty-one Longwoods Purchase, and treaty twenty-nine Huron Tract Purchase. We value the significant contributions both in the past and the present of the local and regional First Nations of Turtle Island. We acknowledge historic and ongoing injustices that Indigenous peoples endure in Canada, and reaffirm our commitment to honoring Indigenous voices, nations, and cultures, and to moving forward in the spirit of reconciliation and respect.
Thank you, Marcy. At this time, if provision of pecuniary interests, if anybody has any, please forward them through to Marcy. Approval of the agenda. Councillor DeVeet, Councillor Burkhart-Jessen, all in favor? Carried. Thank you, everyone. Adoption of the minutes and recommendations for the committee for May 27th, June 13th special meeting, closed session on May the 27th, and closed session on June 13th. Moved by Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Maguire, all in favor? Carried. New business action items, and the first one is 5A1, insurance renewal, and I have, I'm not sure if Cindy or Chris is going to take the lead. Chris, go ahead.
Yeah, I'll give the report, Mr. Warden. Cindy's here, and we have, excuse me, Tony Camiso from Intact is virtual. We have questions that either Cindy or I can't answer. It's time once again for our insurance renewal through Intact. They have provided insurance to the county for a number of years. We have our insurance renewals in Middlesex run from, what page here we go? Run from the middle of the year, so we don't renew at, you know, January the first. We renew July the first. So it's year to year. You can see the numbers on page two of the report about what the expenses are with regards to our costs for provision of insurance at the county. This year's numbers represent a 4.7% increase from our previous insurance program renewal costs. You know, comparison in the marketplace, we're seeing the average municipal insurance increase are around 6-9%, so we are, the opinion this is a good, a good news story for us to see we are below the average. We have a number of different deductibles for within this insurance, and the one I wanted to point out was our $25,000 general liability policy. We've been able to maintain that through a number of measures, whereas comparable insurance policies in other municipalities are around $75,000 or even $100,000. We have undertaken a process internally where we are handling some of the smaller claims related to road paint, potholes, minor damage caused by county activities or claimed against county activities. We handle those in-house, which helps reduce our total number of claims, and our claims history is very good for comparable-sized municipalities in Ontario, which is why we're seeing a decent value for our insurance dollars in 2025, 2026. So the recommendation, I think, will show up, but it's, we're just, the insurance renewal report, be receiving information, and the 25-26 insurance program as submitted by Intact Public Entities Inc. with a premium of $1,359,238 for 12 months plus tax to June 30th, 2026 be approved, and Cindy and I are both happy, and Tony, if necessary, answering the questions.
All right. Thank you, Chris. Is there any questions at this time on this report? Seeing no questions, we have the report, I believe, going up. The recommendation in front of you? Is there a mover for that? Councillor Smiber, Councillor Grantham, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Our next one is our borrowing bylaw, and Cindy, I believe that's yours.
Thanks. And through the warden, each year council is required to pass a bylaw for the line of credit for the county has with the Bank of Nova Scotia. The county only has to pay if we actually use the line of credit. The authorized amount is $2 million. This report also outlines the credit card limits currently in place. The county is authorized for a total amount of $300,000, and we are definitely within the limit. The Finance Department manages the credit card process, and at this time, I'm asking council to approve the borrowing bylaw for 2025, and always happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thanks, Cindy. Is there questions on this from council? Seeing no questions? We have the, we have the motion. Councillor McMillan, Councillor Burkhart-Jessen, all in favor? Carried. I'm sorry, did you have a question on it? Okay. Our next one is a request to remove 0.3 meters or one foot reserve from Petty Street. And Alec, you're doing that, I believe.
Thank you, Warden Robb. Through you to members of council, this report is regarding a request to remove two one-foot reserves for shared driveway purposes along County Road 19, which is also Petty Street, just south of Ilsa Craig. The lifting of these reserves is necessary for the property owner to satisfy a specific condition of severance regarding said shared driveway access to the subject parcels. County staff do not have the authority to lift reserves without council approval, which is why we're here before you today. So essentially, this is an administrative exercise, just shifting shared driveway access from one location to another on the, on the parcels, so that the owner can achieve or complete all the conditions of severance. That's everything. I'm happy to answer questions, and the owner and/or their councils on, in the waiting room on Zoom if they need to be spoken to or have any questions for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions on this? We have a rather long recommendation on this. We're going to put that forward, please. Moved by Councillor Smiber, seconded by Councillor DeVeet, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Thanks, Alec. Our next consolidated municipal service manager, CMSM, cost appointment amending agreements. Mr. Shipway.
Through Mr. Warden, the county is currently in the process of renegotiating the cost apportion agreements, and basically this report, an identical one is going to London City Council, and we're looking for an amendment to the existing agreements to avoid moving to mediation to allow us to come to a mutually negotiated position on these agreements. And this report facilitates that through a number of amending agreements. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Is there any questions at this time? Councillor Grantham?
Thank you, Warden. Through you to Mr. Shipway. I'm assuming that there's no issue. This is just a timing thing and in getting everything done. I did read the amendments, and I did speak to Councillor Maguire. I just, there's no issues. It's just a timing thing, correct, in getting the agreements done?
Through Mr. Chair, yes, the goal of both city staff and county staff is to facilitate this within those timelines and avoid mediation or arbitration.
Okay. Any other questions? Seeing none, we have a recommendation on the screen. Moved by Councillor Mayhew, seconded by Councillor Maguire, all in favor? Carried. Thank you. Inquiries. Councillor Burkhart-Jessen.
Thank you, and through the warden. I just have a question for Cindy, and I think I know the answer. But just wondering where we were with the audit process. Usually, I think we had, last year, the audit was quite late in coming to council, and just wondering when council can expect that to be presented to us, and have you started the budget process for next year?
Through the warden to councillor, great questions. So for the first question, in the room beside us, actually, we do have the auditors here from KPMG, so the audit process has started. This year, we went back to what we originally did, where we do all four audits at once. So we have that ongoing at the current moment. It will take a number of weeks to get the audit process finished. So tentatively, if we, it might be tight to be able to come back in August, probably the first meeting in September would be my goal, to be able to come back and have KPMG come and report on the audit and deliver the financial statements. The second part is, we actually have a director's meeting with our interim CAO this Wednesday, and I'm going to be talking about the budget process with the department heads to get everybody started in that process. And then I'll be coming back, probably the next meeting of council, with just the budget timelines.
Okay. No follow-up? Okay. Any other inquiries? Seeing none? Notices of motion? Councillors' comments? Other business? Seeing none? Committee of a whole? We need to move into committee of a whole. Moved by Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Smiber, all in favor? Carried. First business delegation to Middlesex County, inter-community transit presentation? And Kara, I think you're going to start this.
Yep. Thank you very much, Warden. Through you to council. As part of our ongoing commitment to improving transportation services across Middlesex County, we undertook a comprehensive assessment of our inter-community transit system with funding from the federal government. To lead this work, the county retains Left Turn Right Turn Limited, a third-party consulting agency specializing in transit planning and evaluation in January of this year. Through extensive data analysis and engagement with stakeholders, Left Turn Right Turn reviewed ridership trends, route performance, and service accessibility, and identified opportunities for improvement. The goal of this assessment is to ensure our transit services remain sustainable, responsive to community needs, and aligned with regional growth objectives. The findings will help inform and support both current and future applications to the Ontario Transit Investment Fund and other funding programs. I want to take this opportunity to thank all of our local and regional municipal and economic development partners, as well as the public for contributing their insights to this project. Special thanks for myself as well to colleagues in Namaksgood and Cindy Howard for helping administrate this project. With that, I will now turn it over to Matthew Latavo from Left Turn Right Turn to present the results of the assessment.
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, council, and good afternoon, Warden. Thank you again for the opportunity to present our assessment of Middlesex County Transit Services. My name is Matthew Latavo. I'm a professional engineer and senior transit planning consultant with the firm Left Turn Right Turn Limited. Our firm is nationally recognized from coast to coast as specialized in public, as specialists in public transit, mobility, and accessibility. Next slide, please. Today, I'm going to try and convey the work that my team at LTRT and I have completed over the past six months in about 15 minutes. This has been a very fast-paced and exciting effort, and we have worked closely with staff here at Middlesex County and partners from municipalities from across the county and beyond. This presentation will convey the existing opportunities within the current service, future recommendations for an integrated fixed route, and new on-demand transit services, an implementation plan, and our financial and fair analysis. Next slide, please. Our work began with identifying the opportunities within the current transit network. In the next slide, thank you. To familiarize you all with the context of this network, we focus on the four routes that are currently operated by Middlesex County itself and your partner communities. This includes Route 1 from Lucan to London, so this is the Fanshawe College Main Campus Service north into the Lucan Community Centre through Masonville Mall. This is represented in green on the map. Route 2, which travels from Woodstock into London, starting at the Woodstock Transit Terminal and ending at Masonville Mall through Dorchester and Fanshawe College. This is represented in red. We have Route 3, which is a Dorchester to St. Thomas service that provides a loop through from White Oaks Mall to St. Thomas, the Amazon Fulfillment Centre in Southold, and then back into London and Dorchester. This is represented in purple. And then finally, we have the Strathroy Karadok Intercommunity Transit Service, which connects Sarnia to the London Airport through downtown London in dark blue. Next slide, please. So observations of the current Middlesex County Connect service started with looking at these, the three main routes that are delivered directly by, by the county. It's important to note that there has been a significant ridership increase over the past several years, but there remain opportunities to improve in efficiency and performance for Middlesex County residents. Observations of current route performance helped to establish recommendations for route realignment that reduce service duplication, so it's routes along the same paths at the same times, improve efficiency, and directness for the majority of your transit riders. Restricted access to infrastructure, so in this case, placing stops at certain intersections or on certain sides of the road have created some constraints and challenges in the current network. So our analysis also identified opportunities to improve that. Next slide, please. Observations of the Strathroy Karadok Service include that while ridership has remained very strong over the past several years, increased competition following the deregulation of intercity bus services has resulted in a recent decrease in ridership. However, there are opportunities to improve that ridership growth by introducing more stop coverage in the urban areas of Adelaide-Metcalf and Strathroy-Karadok, synchronizing the fare policy with Middlesex County Connect system, and focusing service on the highest performing components of the row. Next slide, please. So as we went through this process, we worked to develop several network options. These options were developed through a series of meetings and workshops with Middlesex County staff and members of the municipality's working group. These network options look to address system gaps, improve access to all Middlesex County residents, and improve the operating performance and efficiency of the integrated system in the spirit of financial sustainability. These recommendations were developed to address five key network design goals that were identified through that municipality's working group. One, that the service should be fast, efficient, and reliable. Two, that it should be easy to access. Three, that it should improve connectivity. Four, it should address commuters' needs. And five, it should remain scalable over the long term. Next slide, please. The recommendations proposed are based on the premise of an integrated and optimized network. So I mentioned before that we looked both at Middlesex County Connect and the Strathroy Karadok Intercommunity Transit Service. Our recommendations are fundamentally revolve around the integration of those two services. Next slide, please. The proposed fixed route network includes five services that improve connectivity for Middlesex County residents by providing local stops in Middlesex on all routes. These routes include a combined Route 1A and 1B, which operates in a north-south pattern from Lucan-Budolph through Fanshawe College Main Campus and St. Thomas. Route 2, which looks similar to your existing Route 2 on the Middlesex County Connect service, operating between Woodstock and Fanshawe College via Ingersoll and Dorchester. Route 3, from Sarnia to Fanshawe College through Adelaide-Metcalf and Strathroy-Karadok. And Route 4, which is a direct service between Strathroy-Karadok, Adelaide-Metcalf, and Fanshawe. Next slide, please. This network represents a focus on strategic, scalable expansion that balances operational efficiency, enhancements, and connections with your future funding partners in the, in the service. Key changes to the service include modified routing to improve service efficiency, strategic stop locations that improve access and connectivity within Middlesex County and beyond, a new key transfer point at Fanshawe College, which happens to be one of the most well-utilized stops in the current network, an improved frequency and service span along the corridors that most, most demand it. Next slide, please. This slide here has quite a bit of detail, so I want to really focus in on the key highlights here, and we're, I'd be happy to take questions later on any of the specifics. First and foremost, as part of our proposal, we recognize a need for service to operate seven days a week. Right now, service primarily operates on weekdays with limited service on weekends. And as part of this expansion, we're also intending to increase service on some of the key corridors. As a result of this proposed network, and this may take several years to fully realize, we're expecting that there would be four daily round trips between Lucan and St. Thomas through Fanshawe College and London, with an additional four daily round trips from Fanshawe College Main Campus to St. Thomas. We'd have four daily round trips between Woodstock and Fanshawe College, and as many as seven trips between Fanshawe and Strathroy-Karadok, with three trips, round trips extending to Sarnia. Next slide, please. Complementing the enhanced and integrated fixed route network is a recommendation for on-demand transit. Next slide. So this on-demand transit will operate seven days a week, aligning its service with the fixed route network. The on-demand service will eventually become countywide with expansion contingent on participation of the lower-tier municipalities within the county. We expect that once service is up and running across the entire county, there would be as many as five vehicles during peak periods operating to provide the service, but that could range between two and five. And service would connect residents across Middlesex County where there is no proposed fixed route service today, as well as to strategic on-demand hubs that are located outside of the county to ensure that Middlesex County residents have access to good employment opportunities, education, and social and community services that are provided by your neighboring municipalities. Next slide, please. So I wanted to talk a little bit more about these on-demand hubs. These are designed to improve that connectivity to those neighboring municipalities first and foremost. So residents in Middlesex County, for example, are often traveling to your neighboring municipalities, such as, of course, London, but even into Elgin County and St. Thomas, as well as east into Ingersoll and Woodstock. So these hubs are intended to help access those communities where your residents may not have close access to a fixed route. So for example, a hub in Dorchester could connect residents with St. Thomas and employment opportunities there, including the current Southold Fulfillment Centre, and potentially in the future, the Power Co EV plant and other opportunities outside of Middlesex County. Next slide. And one more, please. Thank you. So we recognize that these are very significant enhancements, and when working with staff, we understood a little bit more about their capacity, their resources constraints, and the funding constraints that currently exist. So we developed an implementation schedule that accomplishes this over a period of time. Our proposed implementation plan and timelines aim to balance meeting the priority needs of your current residents as soon as possible within the practical limitations of your resources and funding. So we've broken that down into a three-phase approach, and in the next couple of slides, I'll walk through what that looks like. So next slide, please. So phase one, which is proposed, is sort of the, the core of the network improvements phase. This is really focused on finding improvements and efficiencies. We're anticipating that this would be completed by mid-2026. Phase two involves service expansion and the introduction of that new on-demand transit service, and that would extend from mid-2026 through to the end of 2027. And then phase three is really about transitioning into a sustainable and long-term scalable model, which would begin no earlier than 2028, but would then proceed and expand as demand warrants. Next slide, please. Some of the key highlights of phase one, in addition to the route realignment, include expanding access to the existing transit app provided by Blaze, so that Strathroy-Karadok service is accessible through that app as well. There would be a shift to a new fare model, and I'll talk a little bit more about what that looks like in a couple of slides. And then, of course, there will be a need to adjust your current bus stop locations to accommodate the new routing structure. Next slide, please. Phase two focuses on the work that is needed to expand service to all Middlesex County communities. This will take the form of enhancements to that fixed route network and the introduction of on-demand transit, as well as introduction of additional technologies to support the on-demand service. And next slide, please. Phase three, like I mentioned, this is longer-term activities that are designed to enhance the scalability and long-term sustainability of the service. So this includes improvements to the customer technology, as well as exploring the expansion of the on-demand service area and additional hub locations as the demand warrants. Next slide, please. So with the implementation plan discussed, I'd like to talk a little bit about the fare structure and the costs of these services. As we know, all of these enhancements are contingent on additional revenue and funding from a variety of different sources. But on the next slide, please. On this slide, I just want to talk a little bit more specifically about the fares. So part of this recommendation is really around moving towards a simplified, distance-based fare system for Middlesex County Connect as a whole, so that's inclusive of the Strathroy-Karadok service. While this service ensures that Middlesex County residents still have an affordable way to travel, it also more closely aligns the longer-distance travel with the actual cost of delivering the service. The details here are representative, and there's a lot of flexibility in adjusting these, especially in the introduction of things like discounted monthly passes for certain user groups. However, we did want to share with you this example as, as one example of helping to meet your financial sustainability targets. Next slide, please. And so what would all this end up helping to support? Well, fundamentally, the cost of the service is going to be expensive. However, what we're recognizing is that there's an opportunity to share a lot of these costs, depending on the different partners that come to the table. So as part of this, we're looking at fair revenue. We're also looking at other opportunities, such as the gas tax revenue, the new OTIF funding program, as well as additional partnerships with municipalities and employers. And all of these pieces here are not necessarily, they don't necessarily have to be implemented all at once. They can be implemented piecemeal as funding partners come to the table. Ultimately, the long-term sustainability of this program is contingent on these funding partners and contingent on, of course, local municipal funding directly. Provincial funding and fares are only going to get you so far, and so we recognize that there is a need to find additional revenue to support the service in the long term. Next slide. And with that, I want to thank you for listening in. This has been a bit of a long presentation, a dense presentation, but I'm happy to take any questions, so.
Thank you. Questions from council? Councillor Burkhart-Jessen?
Thank you, and through the warden, great presentation, very exciting project. And I, you know, I've been a fan of the community transit for a number of years, so I'm really glad to see kind of this vision take place. I do have a number of questions. I believe that the funding for the assessment, like this assessment, was through a federal grant. And I want to ensure, and with no disrespect to my colleagues from Strathroy, but you know, the Strathroy route is not our route, and understanding that we need to look at all of Middlesex County, did, did Strathroy contribute to the assessment, or was this fully funded through government funding? That's my first question.
Through the warden to the councillor, this was funded through the federal funding only.
Thanks. And then I just want to make sure that the whole of the county was looked at. I mean, you did speak to kind of the broader vision, which I appreciate, but you know, until the end of May, there was a route that ran through north Middlesex. It was being run by a partner or another community service provider. So I want to ensure that the whole of the county was looked at. I mean, there's a reason why it was, it ended in May 30th. But also, when we looked at these routes, are we looking at, you know, what Huron Shores is, is offering, and how that can complement the routes that, you know, as we develop the routes as they go? And I guess the next step from there is, you know, the local municipalities, for those of us that don't access gas tax transit funding, you know, I'm thinking that there will be a request to the local municipalities for that, and when will that request come? And I'm assuming this presentation will come to our local municipalities at some point.
Thanks through the warden to the councillor. I can start, but others can jump in, definitely. So the first comment is, yes, the entire county of Middlesex was included in this assessment, in this review. And in our consultations, we reached out to everybody, and we also had a focus group- And we also had a focus group that included a number of CAOs or other senior staff from our local municipalities that contributed to the conversation, talked a little bit about the current service that was going on, talked about the gaps in their community, and talked about how transit would benefit their residents in their community. So that was a pretty fulsome discussion. That was part of the whole process. And I can leave others to comment further on that. In terms of where do we go next, which is absolutely great question. So we're here today to talk about this assessment piece. But staff needs to come back to council to talk about the bigger transit. It is official, so I can say that the county of Middlesex was successful in our OTIF application. So we need to come back to talk to council about that in full and talk about how this assessment fits into that. It's exciting news for community transportation, but it's a big decision that council has to make. I say staff worked very hard and were very diligent to be able to put options in front of you and really look at what we've been hearing for a number of years, I can say since the first day I started. The number one thing I heard is, we don't have transportation in Middlesex County. So when this funding application the first time came available, that's definitely why we looked at it and we thought about the residents and we thought about the big gaps that we had in our community. So, but it is still a big decision and we have to come back to council to fully talk about that. What does the OTIF application actually mean? Who are our partners? And what are we going to use from this assessment? Because we have to totally evaluate the assessment that's in front of you today. And the OTIF application was based on our current system and what that looks like. So taking all that into account, and you're absolutely right. We are looking at the other transit systems that are around us. So whether it be Lampton Shores. And then I'd also say maybe what other organizations are looking at as well. So that could be Western Ontario Warden's Caucus. Are they looking at transit? What would that look like? We also have SCT that's out there with SCORE. What are they proposing in the future? How does that line with what we're doing? So we've been looking at all of that as we go along. Anum has had conversations with many of the old community transit partners. Did they apply for funding? What did that look like? How does that tie to us? So there has been a number of work that's happened behind the scenes. We just have to come back to council now that it's publicly announced and we can tell you that we received this funding. And I can tell you also that a number of the partners that we've been talking to, I know will be very excited about this. It isn't just, and that's the bigger discussion, it's not just the county of Middlesex. It's a little bit more of a regional project. And we have been one of the leads on that. So, but again, we have to come back to council and have a fuller discussion with council. But I'm going to pass it over because our others might have other additional comments to add.
Through the warden to the councillor, thank you for the question. Just to elaborate a little bit more on some of the specifics of what our recommendation looked at in order to address some of the new gaps, we'll say, by the unfortunate cancellation of that Huron Shores service. But that is one, was one of the key reasons why we looked to on-demand transit to fill in a gap and to then help to build up that demand in some of those communities that right now are served or were until recently served by that, by that route. But now have to be, we have to look at serving that differently. And on-demand transit thankfully has enough flexibility in it that it can give you an opportunity to see what that looks like if the funding is available.
Okay. Councillor Grantham?
Thank you, Warden, and just comment to Councillor Burkhardt-Jessen. That was half the question I was going to ask about the Strathroy, was about the funding. But did I hear, did you consult with senior staff at Strathroy Caredoc to this? Because I'll admit, Warden, I've lost sight of this file, so I just want to, and I'm a proponent of this transit too. So we need to find a way to keep it, but you've answered my question. Thank you.
Councillor Mayhew.
Thank you, Warden. I noticed in the, in the presentation, it's very wholesome, but it lacks the revenue. Revenue is not part of your examination. Is there information that can be conveyed to County Council on the revenue side?
Through the warden to the councillor, thank you for the question. And yes, there is more information available in our fulsome report on the different revenue options that exist. One of the key things to keep in mind is that all of these different revenue pieces are going to be very tied to the different partnerships that you are able to build up and incorporate into this plan. So there is a little bit of variability in there. But fundamentally, yes, we did look at that and staff are continuing to look at that as we explore partnerships.
Thank you, Warden, for the follow-up. I noticed on the map, and there may be very legitimate reasons that the southwest sector has not been included on this. What's your vision on that?
Thank you again for the question through the warden. So in southwest Middlesex in particular, we're looking at introducing on-demand transit should the funding become available. And the key reason for that is because there is a little bit of a lack of clarity in terms of where the demand is most focused. Is it coming up to Strathroy? Is it going into St. Thomas? On-demand gives you a little bit more flexibility in order to achieve that.
Are you good? Okay, go ahead, follow-up.
Thanks. Yeah, in regard to southwest, just remind you that is, it is the only railway stop between London and Chatham. And in addition to that, we have a hospital in four counties, Newbury, as well.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Schmiber.
Great. Thank you through the warden. I enjoyed the engagement overview that you provided with the presentation as well, because I think that that was really helpful in informing some of the recommendations moving forward. I was just wanting to ask, were you happy with the response rate? And was there any feedback that surprised you?
For that, I might actually have to turn to staff to see what they thought in terms of the response rate. I will just say that generally speaking, responses in, across some of the other communities that we've worked with in this sort of public engagement perspective have been lower in rural communities. It is difficult to get that outreach. However, you know, with longer-standing opportunities to communicate some of these potential changes, there'll be ample opportunity to collect further feedback. With that, I'll turn it over to staff.
I'll speak to that. Thank you, councillor, for the question and through you, Warden. We received over 500, I believe, responses to our public engagement with respect to this project, which is significant in terms of public feedback. We appreciate that. I think my colleagues, as well as our consultants, will certainly identify the fact that this is one of the most complex projects to work on. And the reason for that is not just the geography that we are trying to serve, but the complexity of partnerships, the complexity of funding arrangements that are possible, and also balancing ridership, which continues to grow. We are very blessed to be in a community that, as you know, has seen significant population change and growth and diversity over the course of the last few years. But that adds to the complexity. And the funding models previously in place are not the funding models in place now and going forward. And therefore, looking at all of this at any one time is difficult in that it challenges us all, week to week, in terms of looking at what the potential is. So it is within staff's realm to come back to you. I expect that that will be taking place. As you know, under the current funding arrangement, we have been able to be diligent in our use of spending. And we have extended our current routes to the end of August. However, we need to start to make some decisions with respect to the use of the new funding that has been afforded us and how we can make that happen. So that is where you're going to see the additional revenue streams being spoken to, the leadership of this being spoken to, and us being able to utilize some of the recommendations and maybe not all of those recommendations, as we will have to make some tough decisions. And we have a total of around 26 partners at the table. So if you can imagine the complexity of trying to arrange that. So lots of things for us to look at. The on-demand certainly allows us some opportunity to do that. We are thankful for the engagement. We are thankful to our consultants for utilizing a variety of engagements, some more successful than others in terms of trying to hear from all of our partners. But that is not going to end here. The hard work, I hate to say, is just beginning.
Thank you. Is there any other questions at this time? Seeing no other questions, I will say that I'm looking forward to seeing how the on-demand service will work. I think for some of the areas, that's a better option, but look forward to it. If there's no other questions, then we do have a motion to accept this for information. Councillor Schmiber, Councillor Brennan, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Our next item is Good Roads Rural Road Safety Initiative. Chris.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. As many of you know, one of the advocacy priorities for Good Roads has always been, I think will always continue to be, road safety. And in particular, the focus lately has been on rural road safety. You can note in my report here, the statistics, the most recent ones are from 2021. There was 561 road fatalities in Ontario and 426 of those were on rural roads. And although only 17%, of Ontarians live in rural areas, incidents of fatal collisions constitutes 55% of all serious collisions. So Good Roads has advocated and it continues to advocate for a funding model by which Good Roads can provide resources to municipalities to undergo road safety audits and to fund the infrastructure improvements that are found to be effective once those road safety audits have been completed. So Good Roads is asking for support of this advocacy effort. And the recommendation is quite long, but it'll be shown on screen. Certainly recommending that this, this effort be supported by Middlesex County. Middlesex County has always had strong involvement with Good Roads. And Kathy Burkhardt-Jessen is currently one of the board members. And we have a number of past presidents, including myself, who have served on the board of Good Roads over the years. This type of system actually is in place in other areas of the world, including the United States. I have much experience with their road safety audit system. And this is somewhat modeled after that system that's been very successful in saving lives in rural areas across the United States. And hopefully we can have a similar system here in Ontario. With that, Mr. Warden, the recommendation's on the screen. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions from council? Sorry. Councillor Burkhardt-Jessen.
Thanks, Warden. Not a question. Thanks for bringing this, Chris. It was my request for you to do so. Just to my colleagues, if your municipality hasn't passed this motion, I guess on behalf of Good Roads, I would ask that you consider it. The last two advocacy days, we have spent a lot of time, not only with the sitting government, but opposition in, you know, briefing our members of provincial parliament on the importance of these audits. And, you know, the price tag initially is quite expensive, but when you drill it down to actually money per municipality, it's not a lot. And it can benefit our small rural municipalities greatly. And this would be the perfect project for Good Roads to manage. So thanks for the consideration and hopefully you support the motion.
Thank you. Any other questions on this? This is a good news story here, actually. It's good to see this initiative happens. If there's no other questions, we'll have our recommendation. It is quite a long recommendation, so we'll have that come up. Moved by Councillor Burkhardt-Jessen, seconded by Councillor Grantham, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Our next item is County Road and Bridge Assumption Study. Chris, that's you again.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Warden. Pleased to present the recommendations of the County Road and Bridge Assumption Study Committee, called the Crabass Committee for short. A great committee of public works officials and elected officials from across the county. You can see the list there on the first page. And thank you to Warden Robb and Pastor Warden DeVit for chairing the committee over the last six or so months. You can see that we generally, I should step back before I get into the recommendation of the committee. As our communities grow and the traffic across Middlesex County changes and increases, from time to time, it's advisable for, for us as, in a collaborative way, to have a look at our road system and make sure that we're meeting the recommended maintenance, the minimum maintenance standards that are legislated under the Municipal Act. Generally, when we're looking at roads to be assumed into the county road system, much of the time, it's, it's because the county is set up to be a 24-hour-a-day, 7-day-a-week, 365-day-a-year maintenance provider. And many of the requirements on roads that may have as low as, you know, 2,000 or 1,500 cars a day oftentimes require winter maintenance, especially as frequent as two hours, two or four hours. So that can be challenging for some of our local municipalities to provide that level of service, puts them in a bit of a challenge with regards to exposure to liability, and certainly wouldn't make sense for all of us to be there 24 hours a day. So this is, you know, I think, an efficient way for us to provide sound and safe roads, especially in the wintertime across our county and our region. So every five years or so, and we have had done interim ones as well, but every five years or so, we look at the road network as a whole and we evaluate, basically at the request of local municipalities, sections of road that may make sense to include in the county road network. And not just traffic volumes, but we look at connectivity. We look at boundary roads. We look at other factors that may make these roads good candidates or essentially were candidates to be assumed into the county road network. You can see in the report that's attached, there are a number of road sections that were reviewed with the committee in mind. And there were three that were recommended to be uploaded into the county road network versus Parkhouse Drive, essentially from Mount Bridges to the 402 Highway, Cobble Hills Road, which is a boundary road with Oxford County and Zora Township that runs from Dundas Street up to Thorndale Road. Some discussion to assume that road all the way up to Highway 7. There are some challenges for that road section from Thorndale Road up to Highway 7. And there are some intersection challenges that need to be addressed by the MTO before that becomes a good candidate for inclusion in the county road system. And then Whalen Line, which runs from Granton Line down to Elgin Field Road. The county assumes most of the remainder of Whalen Line and previous road assumption studies. This makes a good sound connection. We are seeing increased use of that road by all sorts of traffic, but heavier use by commercial vehicles, which makes it a great candidate to be part of the county road network as it's being functioning essentially as an archer road. It's also a boundary road with a number of municipalities in Huron and Perth. You'll see that as a requirement of assumption of these roads, we do need to have some recommendations from local council to ask us to assume those roads. We typically will ask for roads to be handed to the county in a reasonable standard of repair. I can safely say that three roads being recommended are all on that reasonable standard of repair. There is also one year's maintenance compensation as provided to the county that can be paid in 2026 for us to be able to maintain these roads without negatively impacting the county budget in the short term. Of course, this will have an impact in the long term of the county budgets, about a 1% increase in our total lane kilometers in our county road network. But again, I think this is sound road management and provides a benefit to both levels of government and to the common taxpayer. We also continue to look at bridges on local roads and potential upload of bridges from local roads to the county road network. Again, it's, we looked at a few specific bridges, mostly in the northwestern part of the county. And I think essentially, we're mindful of the fact that there is a pending infrastructure demand that's going to come to us probably in the next five to 10 years, where bridges are going to become probably our number one challenge with regards to maintenance and replacement of those structures. So we're continuing to monitor those as part of this study. But also, we're continuing to monitor that outside of this study and look at more comprehensive ways for us to work together to reduce the burden of the maintenance and inspection and capital program that's required to keep these bridges functional and keep our roads open and be mindful of the impact of a closure of a bridge would have to our rural populations. So I think I'll leave it there. Mr. Warden, there's a recommendation asking for three things from local municipalities be provided to the county. And then we'll assume these roads. Right now, we're hoping to have this road assumption done in early September. But we're just trying to, knowing it's summertime and giving council some time to get these resolutions back to Middlesex County, we have some flexibility. As long as we're not assuming them in the middle of winter, we are ready and have plans to be able to assume these into the county road network pretty seamlessly at this stage. So happy to answer any questions.
All right. Questions from council. Councillor Grantham?
Thank you, Warden, through you to Chris. And thank you for looking at Parkhouse from London to 81 Highway. I think just for all of council and in the future, I think Parkhouse is a very important corridor. I think just for all the council and in the future, I think Park House is a very important corridor moving forward. I think currently there are only two east-west corridors through the western region, whether Glendon Drive or Longwoods Road. And I think if in the future we can really look at expanding Park House, that'll take the pressure off the urban areas of only Mount Bridges, but also in Delaware. If you get some of the traffic off of Longwoods Road in Glendon and move it on to Park House. So I'll be watching that in the future. I want to thank you for what we have now, but I really do want to emphasize at council that Park House is an important road to keep an eye on because it'll help a lot of our communities moving forward if we can get that over to the county and enhance it somewhat. So thanks, Chris.
Any other questions, comments? Counselor Burkhart-Jackson.
Thanks, Warden, and through you to Chris. Thanks for the report. Just on the Whalen Line portion, you note in the attachment that there are conversations happening with Perth South and Perth County, which is great because I think the last time we did the upload, they were taken by surprise and didn't realize that was happening. So I appreciate that. But just in the event that Perth County doesn't decide to take that portion of Whalen Line, does it, is there any implication with that sort of agreement for maintenance, for snow removal, when you're working with a local municipality and not at another county?
Yeah, that's a great question. Through the Warden, we certainly will be assuming responsibilities of Luca Bedolf in this case, but Temps Centre as well with regards to the maintenance responsibilities or sort of the maintenance agreements that have come up to date with regards to snow plowing and those sorts of things. Fortunately, we can rely on the Municipal Act to tell us what to do in the event that we do not have a formal boundary road agreement with these neighboring municipalities, and that serves us well. It provides us with a means by which to come to an agreement to do any capital works, and it's very simply a fifty-fifty shared cost of doing any of those things. We have been talking specifically with Oxford County for Cobble Hills Road, but we've Perth South knows that this has been on our radars for about five years, as we did consider it last time as well. So yeah, we'll be trying to negotiate new boundary agreements or transferring the responsibilities of the boundary agreements up to the county as part of the once to the next stage of this process, which is the local accepts it, they're going to hand us over those roads.
Any other questions this time? No other questions? We'll wait for the recommendation to come forward. We have a mover, Counselor DeVit, Counselor Clark, all in favor? Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Our next report is Middlesex Supports. Cindy, are you doing that or is Joe? Joe is doing that?
Perfect. Thanks very much, Warden, and through Warden to council. The Middlesex Supports Program continued to support six core funder groups through twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five fiscal year. Over that period, there was around ninety-six children and two hundred and fifty-five families that were supported across the county. These programs are designed to respond to service gaps affecting our youngest residents. And it also aligns with our Childcare and Early Years Service Plan, which was approved last year. A total of ninety-six thousand nine hundred is being requested again this year, which falls in line and within the approved allocation from the twenty twenty-five Social Services Budget. All funding groups are required to submit an annual outcome report and just to make sure that there's some accountability and effectiveness of the program. At this time, though, there is about six thousand three hundred and thirty-six dollars in funding that's has not been allocated. It is recommended that this funding is redistributed across all of the eight lower municipalities. The reallocation does align with the goals and the intent of the Middlesex Accommodations, or Middlesex Accommodations, I say that too much. Middlesex Supports Program. Thank you, and if there's any questions, please let me know.
Questions from council? Counselor Burkhart-Jackson?
Thanks, Warden. Through you to Joe. Thanks for the report. Just a question, I think it's, that's a great idea for the distribution, but just a question on the Early Outreach Conference for the University of Western Ontario, that funding, just wonder how that specifically supports Middlesex families?
Great, and thank you to the councilor through the Warden. So it is, we've been working with Western University to specifically go to schools within Middlesex County, so that funding is directly used for Middlesex County residents.
Other questions? Seeing no other questions at this time? Well, it is quite a long recommendation once again. Moved by Counselor Smiber, seconded by Counselor McMillan, I assume you weren't? Yeah, okay, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Our next one, once again, Cindy, I believe this is yours, Childcare and Early Years Service Program?
Yep, thanks, through the Warden to council. My next three actually are information reports, but I do have some brief speaking notes. And Joe's going to stay there in case there's questions on the first two reports. So again, thanks through the Warden to council. The London Middlesex Childcare and Early Years System Plan for two thousand and twenty-four to two thousand and twenty-eight was approved by council May twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-four. Included in the council package today is the two thousand and twenty-four progress report. So it's always fun to be able to talk about the childcare. The progress report is for both London and Middlesex. The county and the city have a long history of working collaboratively with children, families, and community partners to plan for an integrated system of services for families and children. The two thousand and twenty-four progress report is a reflection of the work completed through the past year to strengthen the early year system. Service system plans are vital to ensure we can advance and to ensure we have advancements and investments in our community to support children and families. These plans also ensure that we can respond to changes such as community growth, which I can say in Middlesex, we've seen a lot of that. Demographic changes as well, we've seen a lot of that. And program changes such as the Canada-wide Early Learning Childcare Program, as referred to it as Quelk, and the new provincial funding formula that we received. The progress report highlights progress that is made by, it's divided, the report with combined. So combined, I mean London and Middlesex. There's also London-only highlights, and there's also Middlesex highlights. And you're going to see in the future, most of the plans that we do with the City of London, they're going to look more like this document versus when I talk about the homelessness one, it looks a little bit different, but in the future, it will look like this one as well. So I'm going to say, and I want to say at the county, both children's services and the library early on work together to deliver these important programs and services. It's a strong partnership that we have. So a few highlights that are in the report. So combined highlights, again, that's between London and Middlesex joined. So we began to update the financial accountability framework in response to all the regulatory changes we received from the province. We started to do data snapshots, were updated on a biannually and shared with over eighty childcare and early years leaders at system-wide operating meetings. And we've had close to one thousand two hundred early year professions participate in the two thousand and twenty-four System Wide Professional Learning Day. A few other highlights, I would say just the Middlesex piece. So we've had partnerships with local school board enables early childhood development screening for children entering kindergarten. I believe we're one of the few early on that does actually this kind of relationship. So we have a small group, but what the early on team does, as as I nod over to one of my counselors, is just amazing, and it's always proud to talk about what they're able to achieve in the early on programs. Early on caregiver satisfaction survey was conducted and results were published. And these results are used to update future early on programs and services. All early on educators receive training in early childhood development screening. Over a hundred and eight staff were supported with the Wage Enhancement Grant or the Home Childcare Enhancement Grant. And five hundred and eighty-eight staff were supported with wage supports provided through Quelk. So in total, resulting in average hourly wage was twenty-four thirteen for educator with an REC designation. Why I say that's really important, we've talked a lot about being able to retain and attract. So if there's any way that we're able to increase the salaries, it's so much better for our community and our childcare operators. So those are really big wins that we're able to do in our community. And it also means the long-term sustainability of our community as well. So the report also highlights the focus of the Directed Growth Plan. So the total number of net new spaces for London Middlesex for licensing between twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six is two thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine. So for Middlesex, this includes the two new eighty-eight spaced, school-based childcares in Lukin and Kelworth. We're very excited about the planning that's going on for those. So Joe and I are happy to answer any questions that you may have in regards to this update.
Questions from council? Counselor Burkhart-Jackson?
Thank you, and through the Warden, great report. This is very exciting to see a report like this ruled out for this program. I think we have to do such, we, it's great in the in the champion that you're doing for the program because there's no question that I don't think anybody's surprised, like I do see Middlesex as a leader when it comes to this. So congratulations. Great about the wage increase because of Quelk. And hopefully, we can continue to attract a staff to our to the facilities in our community. But you do bring up the two new daycare centers that will be opening up in Kelworth and in Lukin. And I guess, you know, if I speak from, we already have a center in Lukin, and they are having problem attracting staff to that facility. So what is it that we can do? Do we think because these two facilities are going to actually be in education facilities? Is there more of an attraction to that? Because I guess the concern is, you know, we've got two centers opening up, eighty-eight spaces, our families need this. I mean, look at the waitlist numbers, that was astonishing to me, that waitlist number. So what is it that we can do to ensure that we actually have staff at these facilities?
Thank you, counselor through Warden to council. Great question, and through the RFP process, when we first were choosing the two operators, that was one of the the main questions that we asked is because we do know that in the county, in rural populations, it's not just our county. It is a little more challenging to attract and retain staff, especially registered ECEs. So through that process, that was one of the questions, and they assured us that they would not have any issues with staffing both of those new centers. That being said, we are also still having conversations with the City of London in partnership to how do we do our funding a little bit different to maybe attract more individuals? Because not only is it the infant toddler and preschool rooms, but it's also our school age programs that are struggling to maintain staffing. So there are some conversations that are being had to see how do we move forward and make sure that we are staffed. We also, we've been working with our local employment Ontario sites to make sure that they are quite involved in this processes to make sure each of those locations, even the current locations, have resources and supports in finding new and maintaining the current staff that they have.
Any other questions, comments from staff from council, pardon me? Seeing none, recommendation coming up before you? Moved by Counselor Clark and Counselor Smiber, all in favor? Carrie. Our next one is the homeless, I believe, homeless and housing plan?
Thanks, through the Warden to council. I do want to point out, we wanted to make sure that we got both of these on the agenda because the City of London has already went to their Community and Protective Services Committee CAPS and had these reports on there. So we thought it was really timely before it even went to their council. We were talking to you because the Middlesex stuff is incorporated in there as well. So so in front of council today is the final update of the Homeless Prevention and Housing Plan for two thousand and twenty-four. Change begins with choice. The county has already started working in collaboration with the City of London, County Council, and the community to update the new five-year plan. Appendix A is the two thousand and twenty-four City of London Update for the Housing Stability for All Plan. Actions related to the service manager role can be found in here. So I did go through it and tried to see where I could point out that it would tie into the County of Middlesex. So for an example, is action item three point three B, where it's support housing providers to help tenants reach their community of choice, would be example where that ties into London and Middlesex. And I will just point out again that members from the City of London will be attending county council, we're hoping in September, to provide an update on housing and homelessness and the service system manager. So this plan was an important document for Middlesex and provided a good tool to work with the City of London, council, the community, and the province to address the increasing homeless prevention needs and range of housing gaps. This plan also shows the impact of our community when senior management, county and local municipal staff and departments such as social services, planning, and economic development work together. A few of the key highlights. So the Middlesex Housing Attainability Review Final Report was completed in two thousand and twenty-three. But in two thousand and twenty-four, we still continue to do work. The county began further to work, began further work to access the housing needs of all of its residents. So these aren't documents that we do one time, we keep building on them as we go forward into the future and look at some of the changes that are going on. Middlesex demonstrated leadership in Ontario by actively supporting local municipalities in their application for the CEMHC Housing Accelerator Fund. In two thousand and twenty-four, four municipalities in Middlesex were approved for HAF funding, and that's thanks to Paul and the Planning Department. In Strathroy Caredog, through its housing corporation, thirty-seven new housing units were added, including affordable housing units. In Middlesex Centre, we've seen construction started for the Design for Happiness Project. This is an innovative sixty-nine unit residential development. The Middlesex County Community Navigator Role continued to play a key role in assisting residents with accessing housing-related programs. And in two thousand and twenty-four, we were able to add a second community navigator as well. The two thousand and twenty-four Middlesex Accommodation Program, I say that's one of our highlights, that's our hub. And I will continually say that we were one of the first communities out there that had that hub program in place. Expanded from nine to eleven rooms. In two thousand and twenty-four, the program supported seventy-seven individuals. And in total, the program has serviced over two hundred and ten individuals. So I'd say that's pretty impressive. We have been working on a number of exciting projects, so now I'm going into the future. As part of our homeless prevention funding, social service and planning is working with a company called Flourish. Flourish is an organization that works with municipalities to create affordable housing solutions that promote community well-being. Our goal is to work with them on at least two sites to create a pro forma or a template for an affordable housing project that will include capital costs, capital funding, operating costs, and operating funding. The template can then be used by other local municipalities. We're just in the beginning of this phase, and we just met with them last week, and we went and looked at a couple properties. We're also working on a homelessness communication plan, which includes updating our website, preparing information documents that can be shared with the community regarding homelessness, and planning an event such as a summit with the aim to provide information to community residents on supports available for housing insecurity. And our last thing is we're continuing to meet with community partners on developing a more long-term solution for our accommodations program. And have mentioned this concept with Flourish when we met with them last week as well. I always say shovel ready, so we're trying to be prepared if we can get a business case together, if funding becomes available. Thanks, and myself, Dirk, or Joe are happy to answer any questions.
Questions? And council, questions on this? Seeing none? We have a recommendation to receive this for information? Counselor Grantham? Councillor Brantum, councillor Brennan, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. You have one more, and that's the Budget Variance Report.
Yes, thanks. Again, this is an information report, so I'll be brief. So through the Warden to council, this report is the budget variance for the period January to May two thousand and twenty-five. At this time, all department budgets are in line with budget. We are very early in the process. Report, this report highlights a number of projects that have been accomplished or are in the process of being completed, and they all are financial in nature. For example, in social services, I know I just talked about it, but the Middlesex Accommodation Program was renewed. The county strategic plan was approved. New, some new Making It in Middlesex videos were produced. The next phase of, I guess, the variance report is finance is going to be working with other departments to create more of a financial report for the first six months. So this report will include operational indicators such as how many tenders or RFPs have been posted. I'll highlight some of the challenges that we're facing and some upcoming projects. But it's something that I don't have the resources to do on my own, so I have to work with the other departments to be able to do that. So I'm looking forward to be able to present that at a future meeting. The goal of that is to provide a comprehensive overview, so the county can inform the community and highlight progress. Myself or department heads are very happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions on the variance report? No questions? All right, we have a recommendation, once again, to receive this for information? Councillor Mayhew, councillor Smybert, all in favor? Carrie? Thanks, Cindy. I think you can take a break for a couple of minutes. Our next one is Population Housing Employment Projections, Abby.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to members of county council. Middlesex County's population projections, which are included in the official plan, are intended to assist the county and local municipalities in guiding growth management. The last update occurred in two thousand and twenty-one and used a twenty-five-year planning horizon. This current update is timely due to several factors. The first being that the two thousand and twenty-four provincial planning statement now requires that municipalities base projections on Ministry of Finance data, and it also provides for a flexible planning horizon of twenty to thirty years. Additionally, since our last population projections, new census data has been made available as well as evolving regional growth trends that further support the need for updated projections. So Watson and Associates economists were retained to prepare the updated projections, which will inform part of the draft amendment to the county official plan for consultation purposes. Their methodology began with the Ministry of Finance projections for the broader London Middlesex area, and they were then refined to reflect, to reflect Middlesex County only, using local data, including housing activity and demographic trends. So Watson prepared four scenarios, including low, medium, medium-high, and high. These scenarios reflect a notable upward revision in terms of growth rates and overall population when compared to our previous two thousand and twenty-one forecasts. The medium-high growth scenario is recommended as the most appropriate and balanced forecast, which is noted in Watson's report that's appended to my report. The scenario reflects the MOF fall two thousand and twenty-four projections and assumes continued net migration of working-age adults and ongoing growth pressures from the City of London, as well as the Greater Golden Horseshoe. And under the scenario, the county is projected to grow to approximately a hundred and fifty-one thousand five hundred residents by two thousand and fifty-six, with an average annual growth rate of one point eight percent. In terms of population trends and housing outlook, the population is expected to continue aging over the planning period. These trends will increase demand for seniors' housing, of course, affordable and higher-density housing, as well as require adjustments to certain service delivery. Housing demand is based on the population forecast and future household formation. And just for council's information, figures four eleven and five two in the report provide housing forecasts by structure type and municipality. As for the employment forecast, the medium employment growth scenario is what is recommended by Watson. This would see approximately twenty-two thousand two hundred additional jobs to two thousand and fifty-six. I also want to take this time to just provide a quick update to council on the ongoing county official plan update. So to date, we have held four planning advisory committee meetings, each of which focused on a key topic area, including housing, agriculture, economy, and growth and development. These sessions have guided policy development and incorporated feedback from members of council and public appointees who sit on the planning advisory committee. Watson did present the growth analysis update at the May two thousand and twenty-five PAC meeting, which is linked in my report. As well, a broader engagement campaign that staff have coined as Middlesex two thousand and fifty-six was led by Corey Consultants. And this included a public survey that we had available on our website, and we used our social media to kind of get it out there. A non-statutory open house, as well as four interest holder workshops that were hosted by Corey. So staff are currently still in the process of drafting policies with the key proposed policies to be presented to PAC this coming Thursday on June twenty-six. This will inform a draft redline official plan, which will eventually be submitted to MMAH for consultation, hopefully in early July, with the statutory public open house and public meetings likely to occur in the fall of this year. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No questions from council at this time? All right, we have a report and a recommendation in front of you? We have a mover for that. Councillor Mayhew, seconded by councillor DeVie, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Proposed plan of subdivision for Carroll Street East Development, Dirk?
Very briefly through the Warden, this is residential development proposed in Strathroy. Excuse me, equates sixty-five single detached lots, forty townhouse units, and then a high-density block and a number of other stormwater and kind of utility blocks. It's in an area that's either, the surrounding land uses are either existing residential development or properties that are in the midst of being developed, so it's a sort of a piece of the puzzle that's happening in that area. I won't go into a lot of details in the report, but agency ministry circulation was undertaken. All the matters that were raised during that process were either addressed or can be addressed by the conditions that are recommended. There was one matter that took a longer time, really for the municipality and the developer to come to a common point on, and that was just stormwater management related to this property and just the general area. The municipality is satisfied with the additional work, and therefore the municipality, and I am also recommending approval. Be happy to answer any questions.
Questions on this from council? Seeing no questions? We have a recommendation? It's coming up before you. Moved by councillor Brantum, seconded by councillor Clark. All in favor? Carrie? Thank you. Our next item is correspondence and information items. Are there any that people want spoke to from ninety-one to ninety sixteen? Councillor Clark?
Yes, ninety-two. I don't know, Carrie, your report was quite comprehensive. I didn't know if you had anything you wanted to highlight or add at this time?
Thank you, councillor, through the Warden to yourselves and to council. I appreciate the inquiry that was made at the May meeting with respect to a payment made to Consultants Research, Consultants International, FDI. Really took this opportunity to inform council with respect to the robust FDI strategy that has been put in place in our department, as well as the undertaking of a number of different strategies and actions that are multifaceted, which make up our programming with respect to foreign direct investment. So this was really my opportunity to provide that information to council, and if there are any questions on any elements of the program, I'd be happy to entertain those.
Are there questions, Carrie, on this? Seeing none? Is there other items from ninety-one to sixteen? If there is not, then I would ask for a mover of our correspondence. Councillor Smybert, councillor Brennan, all in favor? Carrie, thank you. Look, I believe we're looking for a motion to go into closed session. Oh, we have to rise from the media hall. Councillor Clark, councillor Smybert, all in favor? Carrie? Now I'm looking for a motion going to closed session, and the reasons, I think they're being posted now. Councillor Smybert, councillor DeVie, all in favor going to closed?